Good evening. I would like to call to order this Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, February 11th at 7:14 PM. As we begin all of our meetings, we begin with a mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learning and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Mark Flaherty.
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
Sean Dooley. Okay, as we begin with all of our meetings, we begin with public comment. If anyone from the audience would like to comment on anything?
Back to us.
They're rushing up.
We should give them a couple of minutes.
Make it through the crowd. All right, so moving on. First order of business is donations. We received three donations from the Norfolk TPA totaling $4,116.63. The first was $774, which was broken up for mentor tests, Mark Buzzes, and Raz Kids. Do we know what Raz Kids are?
It's an application for a reading program.
Okay. And then we have $2,788.26 for an MCAS skills class, and then $553.63 for kindergarten books, A-plus worksheets, book bags, and art posters. Is there a motion to accept the donation of $4,116.63?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
School Committee Chair Report. I received a letter from, this is in response to our changing the policy for the gym and for renting everything here that we did last month, was, I'll just read it to you, it'll be easier. "Hi Sean, I hope all is well with you. I received the attached email from H. Halliday School today. The inspiration performing troupe, my daughter Emily is the director, has been using the school for singing dance rehearsals for the past couple of years. In the fall, the troupe signed up to use the school for rehearsals on Mondays and Wednesdays afternoon for two hours per day. I understand the school committee voted to change for a fee for the usage of the school. I am wondering if there's any way that the troupe can be exempt from this charge until the end of this academic year. The troupe did not have rental fee budgeted for the spring season. They are busy rehearsing to sing the National Anthem for the Boston Bruins on March 15th and performing in New York City on Memorial Day weekend. The troupe sings for nursing homes, community events, and they do not profit from their performances. I hope you can take this into consideration. I appreciate anything you can do. Thank you. Jonathan Garvin." I talked to Jonathan, I said, you know, would there, you know, just to kind of give him, you know, a little wiggle room, he's like, you know, would they be able to make some amount of donation? And he's like, you know, our budget honestly is very, very tight. We could probably donate, you know, $150, you know, to the schools for the use of the fees, but, you know, that's basically all the other money that they're been raising is going for the traveling to New York and things along those lines. So we don't need necessarily a motion on this at first, just kind of discuss it.
Wasn't there a clause in there where nonprofits had, were exempted from a fee or didn't have a fee?
No.
No?
School partners and school groups, and then town departments are the only ones exempt from fee.
Because basically almost everyone that comes, you know, CYOs, you know, all these organizations are basically nonprofits.
Okay.
You know, I understand their point from the standpoint of that it, you know, changed here in the middle of the year. You know, I wouldn't necessarily consider this at the beginning of, at the beginning of the year as the policy's in place, but when you already have, you know, things booked, I at least understand their, you know, their concern. The, with devil being in the details.
We make exception for them where...
Nobody has...
Planned for it.
Has planned for it. You know, everyone that has been renting from the schools can make this exact same argument that...
Right. What do you propose? Do we make a one-time exception?
Well, that's what I kind of wanted to just discuss it. I mean, I didn't have any, you know, I can see both sides of the argument. It makes, you know, would I, of course, do I want to...
Help them out.
Help them out and waive them? I mean, it's, you know, it's a good organization, you know, Jonathan's a friend of mine, you know, I don't want to see anybody suffer, but I also don't want to open up a can of worms that, you know, everyone... I mean, how many people do we have currently renting ongoing? Do we have any idea? Roxanne? Or Donna?
The group charge just started.
Right, no, but how many people do we already have, like, booked for the year besides the performing troupe?
I'd have to look at...
Any guess? A lot? A couple?
A lot.
A lot.
Just judging from what the secretaries, you know, booking what the custodians are prepared for each night, there's a lot of groups that use the facilities.
A lot as in ten? I mean, if you had to just pick, I'm not, I was trying to see what a lot means, I guess is what I'm trying to get to.
I don't want to, I wouldn't want to hazard that kind of a guess, because I really don't know the facts.
Sure.
But I, you know, I know that that calendar is relatively full.
Okay.
And even from my own experience, when I used to try to book, you know, King Philip's music programs, I mean, I basically had to pay for all the skill space and let them have those groups in here.
Right, is it predominantly, are we predominantly booking out the gym?
Gym, cafeteria.
Gym and cafeteria?
The big spaces.
Yeah, okay.
We could have that information for you for your next meeting, if you want.
Right.
I mean, you could agree to consider this and decide in March. Get back to them with a response in March, and I can get you a listing of all the groups that are currently renting and what they represent.
Okay. And also, you know, find out exactly where they're, you know, what they're using, if they're using, you know, you know, just a classroom or something along that, that's not necessarily, you know, make it easier for, make a exception.
Do they use the gym, these folks here? Is that the same?
It doesn't...
I believe they do.
You think they do use the gym?
I believe they do.
Oh, okay.
I think they use the library too. I've seen them about...
Yeah, they sometimes use, I think, the library space. But I'll find out. What I can do is get for the next meeting, a list of all the groups, what spaces they're using, and who's being charged the fee.
Okay.
What they're using currently, and then have that for the March meeting.
Are we okay waiving their fee until March, since we can't give them an answer now?
Yeah, I'm on a problem.
Kelly?
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so worst-case scenario, they're getting a...
Free month.
They're getting a free month. So, and that way we can really clarify that. Okay. All right, next thing, let's see, last month we voted for, to allow parents to opt out of Park. I do want to apologize, I kind of, since we didn't, although it's perfectly fine from a open meeting law and state standard, since we had it on the agenda to take a vote, we do have a school committee policy that we're not going to be voting on anything without it specifically being listed as an action item. So we kind of started talking about it and then kind of went into, you know, we turned it into an action item, and, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, but, you know, that is not, you know, that is against our policy, especially since it wasn't, you know, necessarily an emergency. So I just wanted to apologize on that and just not set bad precedents. We received a letter back from the DESE, which, more email correspondence, and then this is just a generic letter regarding the background on the park. And basically what they stated was that, in their legal opinion, we do not have the right to allow parents to opt out. I still personally disagree with this, and I will go, I will go on in a second, once we finish on to this. What I did was put together a letter to the DESE objecting to their ruling for everyone to, you know, take a look at, read, we can tweak, and if everyone's comfortable with signing or partially signing, then we can send it to them that, you know, we believe it is our, you know, their ability. Okay, I'll just pass that out now. And basically what I, I'll read this for the, for all the folks anxiously awaiting at home. Dear Mr. Lee, on January 14th, 2014, the Norfolk School Committee voted to allow parents to opt out of the Park field test that is being administered this spring on a trial basis. We believe that since this is in addition to the MCAS that these children are required to take, and only certain students of the fourth grade will be forced to take this test, the parents of these selected students should have the right to decide whether the children are to participate in this trial. Our superintendent shared with us a response to our vote, and it is your opinion that we are not allowed to provide an opt-out for parents based on your citing of Massachusetts Law and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's ruling on MCAS. You, through your legal counsel, cited Mass General Law, Chapter 69, Section 11, asserting that this test is to assess student, to assess individual students, comprehensive diagnostic assessment of individual students shall be conducted to the fourth, eighth, and 10th grade. They made the emphasis on "shall." We respectively disagree with your assertion, since this test is not providing comprehensive diagnostic assessment of individual student, and that no information regarding the results are being shared with the parents, teachers, or individual districts. We further assert that this is an issue of parental rights, as to whether the Massachusetts Department of Education has the right to mandate testing that will result in no quantitative data reporting. We also assert that the right of the Norfolk School Committee to provide our citizens with the right to opt out of program. We would like to point out that this, that the certain districts are being allowed to opt out entirely. We would like to point out that certain districts are being allowed to opt out entirely. This is not our request, we're only asking that parents have the right to choose what is best for their children. And in conclusion, the Norfolk School Committee wishes to, this letter to go on record as our strong objection to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's decision that a locally-elected school committee does not have the legal right to allow parents of their affected children to, the ability to opt out of the Park pilot program.
Nicely written.
The only thing I would point out to you is the slight little typo where you didn't put a space between...
After 11?
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that too. I'm like, is that 1 or 11?
I think that should be, that should be 1...
Oh, yes, yeah, I guess.
1.
2.
They may not take kindly to that.
To assess. I did misspell "assess," and it was not, it was not deliberate. And so I guess we wanted to find out if the committee's...
I didn't even notice that.
Yeah. The committee's fine with this?
This is what I bring to this.
I think that should be section, it shouldn't be 11, it should be 1I, 1B, and 1I.
Yeah.
On page four.
Oh, okay. I was reading off of a different email. Do you have the email that he originally sent?
It's attached in there.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're citing 1I.
1I?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
1I, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And 11.
Oh, okay.
No, that is 1I, never mind.
Well, yeah, it's 1I. No, it's 1I. Or 1, yeah.
Yeah, it's 1I, and then, I don't know if he cites, their initial letter cites 1B, but their email response doesn't cite 1B.
It does.
1B, excuse me, doesn't?
No, no, no.
Section 1, sections 1B and 1I.
No, 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 but the email is the last page?
Oh.
It doesn't...
The email does cite, they just cite 1I, whereas their initial letter cites 1I.
Oh, yep. All right.
Right, and I was gonna say, that's what I was referencing there, from their legal counsel. Okay. So are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
And so what we can do is pay them at the end. Can you, I emailed it to you?
You did?
I did. Can we just change that so we can sign it tonight at the end? I have the changes, so...
Okay, you have the changes, yeah.
Yeah, but I emailed it to your personal, to your Norfolk Public School email.
Just need to add a little subsection notation as well. Is it simple for subsection for...
Right, as I was gonna say, I don't know, I don't know if we, I mean, I didn't have it on my, I could not find it on my program.
Oh, it's in Word, you have to dig for it.
Okay, so...
There's a simple section of Word, it's not the end of the book, they don't have it.
All right.
It's like your argument for the Supreme Court.
Okay. So if you have this, that's the reason I put "section" as opposed to...
Okay.
I could not figure out.
It's buried in Word.
I'm married to a lawyer as you are. Your wife does much more grandiose. All right, so, all right, so we'll get that done afterwards, because everyone's staying, except for you, right? Correct. And I'll only take a minute. All right.
So are we all, is the intent for all of us to sign this?
I was gonna say, I think it has more, you know, impact.
Sure. No, the only question I had, because I know initially we did the vote on this, I had voted no. Does it make a difference that I vote no, I'm still signing a letter? I mean, I don't...
Well, I think it's fine for you, I think you're fine signing with the, you know, because we're just objecting that they're not allowing us...
That's fine.
To, you know, totally your call. I mean, it's, if you don't want to sign it, it's fine.
We're gonna go sign for the non-existent...
No. I mean, you still have the qualms, so it's fine.
Right. And let's see. I would like to also make a motion that the school committee in our charitable budget, in our school committee general budget, that we make a donation to the Fisher House this year for the amount of $100.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And finally, retirement from school committee, after, although this is very, very difficult for me, as I've really, really enjoyed being on the school committee the past four years, with being elected state representative, although I'm allowed to continue to stay on, given the fact that I'm representing six towns, I don't think it's right that I'm hyper-focused on the school committee. So I am going to resign as of the election this year. So I've notified the clerk to put on the, there's two, you know, your two positions are up this year, so there will be two three-year positions, and then the remainder of my position, so one year, one two-year position available for election this year. I'll stay on through, and that way we can finish with contract negotiations and everything along those lines. I don't want to have us be short a member with, you know, we're not going to replace someone with two months left, so. So I just wanted to thank everyone, and hopefully the people out there, there will be, will have a huge group of people that will want to come on and serve on the school committee. It's honestly is one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. You know, Thomas and I came on together, and we've seen a lot of dramatic changes. We've, you know, fortunately we have Dr. Allardy to thank for a lot of those, but, you know, the schools have gone from an 88% target to 100% target. Freeman Kennedy now is ranked, I think, in English Language Arts 12th in the state, and, you know, we've made huge progress on all the policy changes and as well as the curriculum, and then we're moving onward and upward, and I look forward to hopefully being able to help that from the State House, as I've been assigned as, fortunately from my work on the school committee, I've been assigned to the Education Committee for the state. So I am going to be up there still fighting for the Norfolk Public Schools and all the district schools from that standpoint, so. All right, so...
All right, so I have a whole bunch of things for tonight. The first is, in your packet there, we did have a resignation, so there's information regarding that in your packet, and it is a position that we have already re-advertized and are in the process of interviewing for at the HOD. It was a resignation due to a family move. So there's information regarding that in your packet.
I thought it was you as soon as I said I was gonna resign. You were like, "The hell with it, Sean's not here, I'm out of here too."
The second item...
Everyone's laughing.
The second item in your packet, Dr. Tepper was going to be coming tonight to provide some additional information on preschool programming and recommended tuition rates for next year, and unfortunately she had a last-minute conflict that came up and is not able to make it. So I'm going to review those proposals with you and see if I can respond to any questions that you may have. We also have Alicia Whitehead and Joan Marsden here, representing the preschool in the audience, so if there are program changes that I have questions on, I might refer for them to you. During the 2012-2013 school year, there were a number of different programs that were piloted at the preschool level. That was the first year that we offered the Transitional Kindergarten Program, and there were some other things piloted. At the conclusion of that year, Dr. Tepper met with preschool staff, they looked at what worked, what didn't work well with the pilot programs. They also looked at the needs of incoming students, and they made adjustments to the programs based on the needs of those students that they felt would really strengthen the programming that we were able to offer and better serve the population. Being new to the role, Dr. Tepper was not aware that those changes, programmatic changes, should have come to the school committee, because generally, school committee governs policy and budget. However, because our preschool program is a tuition-based program, and our school committee policy gives school committee the authority to set the hours of the school day, there is overlap between those two things. So they should have come to the school committee and did not. So in order to clarify that, I asked her to put together a spreadsheet that would really show you what the programs looked like in the pilot year, what changes were made for this current school year, and then what the recommendations are going forward. So that's the page, it's the last part of your, it's a graphic that looks like this, it's in the packet, I think it's page three. So I just wanted to walk through all of the changes, and then we can talk about the recommendations for tuition. So currently, in the pilot year, for the, we had a half-day preschool program for three-year-olds. It's a morning preschool program. That program ran from 8:30 to 11:00, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and there was a non-integrated day for students on Wednesday. This year, that program is running as exists, so there were no changes made, and the recommendation for next year is to keep that particular program as it exists, so there's no changes in that. We also have a half-day four-year-old afternoon preschool program. That program runs 12:15 to 2:45. It is integrated Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Last year, the team decided to add an additional non-integrated day to that program. So that's a four-day program. They added a Friday morning for our special education students only, who have some additional programming needs. Some of our students on the autism spectrum have additional programming, social programming services that they benefit from having that non-integrated day. So that was added. It's 9 to 11 on Friday. That was added so that, this year. We're recommending keeping that program intact for next year, so there's no changes to that from the current programming.
And since the only additional hour programming is for special ed, there's no...
There's no tuition change, yeah.
Yes.
All right, next page. We have a half-day three- and four-year-old, a half-day three- and four-year-old five-day program that Alicia teaches. That program is from 8:30 to 12 o'clock, Monday to Friday. Last year, and we talked about this a little bit at the meeting, the program hours were changed, and we added a delayed start time on Friday. So the program starts 8:30 to 12:00. On Friday, the students come in at 9:00. The reason for that is to allow the preschool teachers to attend meetings, have consultations with therapists, work together as a group to collaborate around programming. So that delayed start time, the kids come in at 9:00. Again, our buses arrive at 8:45, so the idea of staggering the times, if they come in at 8:30, is they're coming in before all the buses. If they come at 9:00, they're coming after most of the buses have left. So it works better to stagger the times that way. That's as exists. It seems to be we've gotten no negative feedback from parents on that delayed start. I think for a lot of families, it's a relief not to have to get everybody up and dressed and out the door by 8:30. So that seems to work well for our families, and we have had no concerns with that. We're recommending for that program this year, and Dr. Tepper spoke to this at our last meeting, reducing that five-day program to a four-day program, so that we would be able to continue with a non-integrated day for that population as well. So that would become from a five-day to a four-day, and we would have to adjust tuition accordingly.
Why make the non-integrated day Monday instead of the shortened day Friday? Any particular reason?
You might have to come to a microphone, Alicia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you could.
Just because of the scene, it's on camera, and the audience won't hear you.
You can use Jeff's.
You can use Jeff's, yeah.
I don't buy that.
I'll sit here at the table with all of you, too.
And if you could introduce yourself.
I'm Alicia Whitehead, I'm one of the integrated preschool teachers. The idea of not making it a Friday is because my class this year, and presumably for next year, is made up mostly of three-year-olds. And by Friday, to, the idea of having the non-integrated day is in essence to preview the curriculum for the week, to work on, as Ingrid said, social skills and specific goals on their IEPs. By Friday, it's all they can do just to be able to sit at circle. So I felt that on Mondays, on Mondays, it's the best day to preview the curriculum for the week, to center those, that small group time in teaching to their specific skills. Monday is definitely a better day for them.
And I think the idea of pre-teaching is critical. What we're trying to do for some of our students with language-based disabilities or on the autism spectrum is to prepare them so that they can successfully participate in the larger group. So if you pre-teach on Friday, they've lost that by Monday. So to prepare them for what we're going to be doing, to give them some of the language that they need, so that they can be part of the circle time and the other activities, it's critical to do it, you know, early in the week.
Thank you.
And they, oh, so just a quick question for you while you're still up there.
Dismissed.
For the, and the reason for the nine o'clock start on Friday is, Friday morning is the only morning that you have the integrated, all the teachers get together?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that also allows us, that meeting also involves Dr. Tepper.
Right.
And where we play the dual role of not only a regular ed teacher, but also a special ed teacher, it allows us to review cases, discuss any policies, any procedures with her as well.
Okay. What is done for students who, parents are dropping off, you know, they have a first-grader and a preschooler? So, you know, I know a couple of years ago, when my son was in Mrs. Marsden's class, you know, they would be basically dropped off at 10 till, I mean, and there was always someone in the classroom, so they were still able to be accepted, you know, so the parent, you know, parents not sitting around...
Are you talking at the 8:30 drop-off or the nine o'clock?
No, at the nine o'clock.
At the nine o'clock drop-off, usually what happens is the families can opt to do a couple of things. Either they put their older child on the bus, and then bring their preschool child in for the nine o'clock arrival, or families, and maybe Joan can speak better to this, but families have just had, you know, had their child go on, drive both children to school, have their child go on to their classroom, and just wait in that front hall area, front portico of the school.
People drop off usually between quarter of 9:00 and 9:00.
Right.
Right.
So for that nine o'clock start time on Fridays, you'll get kids that might drop off closer to 9:00.
Right.
Park their car, and then walk them to preschool.
Walk in.
And it's what we found for this year on Fridays.
Okay.
And it's really gone smoothly. We've had, nobody really come to us and say, "I don't know what to do."
And I presume...
It's a shorter time span.
It is, a much shorter time span.
I presume someone's probably in the class at 10 till 9:00, or 5 till 9:00 anyways.
They haven't had any children come in at that time.
Yeah.
There isn't, we are not, we're saying not needing...
Right, but I'm saying there's an assistant there, so if there is a child that came in...
They wouldn't come into an empty classroom, no.
Okay, good.
No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next program, we have a program for three- and four-year-olds that's a five-day program that is integrated. It's from 8:30 to 12:00, Monday to Friday. It's from 8:30 to 12:00, Monday to Friday. It's integrated, and it's non-integrated in the afternoon, 12:00 to 2:15, Monday to Thursday. The only change to that program this year was the delayed start time, as we talked about, so that all of the preschools would have that common, common time for meetings. We're recommending continuing that program as it exists this year. And then, the last program is the Transitional Kindergarten Program that is taught by Ms. Marsden, who is here as well. During the pilot year, that program ran Monday to Friday from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. 8:30 to 9:00 was the morning drop-off time. It was a window, so parents could drop any time between 8:30 and 9:00. Pickup time was any time between 2:30 and 3:00. So, the program actually ran from 8:33, which is a longer school day than any of our other students have, and a longer contract day for Ms. Marsden than any of the rest of the staff. Some adjustments were made at the end of the pilot year for last, for this current year. We did change the start time on Friday to the delayed start, and then the pickup time was defined as 2:30, to make the day comparable with any of our other students' six-hour school day. So, the program times were made from 8:30 to 2:30, and they also put in place a noontime dismissal on Friday. So, that program runs 8:30 to 2:30, Monday through Thursday, and then from 8:30 to noon on Friday. So, that change was made this year for the Transitional Kindergarten Program. The recommendation for next year is to continue with the, the intent of keeping a six-hour day, but to shift the hours for that program completely, so that it runs from 9:00 to 3:00 instead of from 8:30 to 2:30. The reason behind that is that if it runs from 9:00 to 3:00, then our students that are involved in the Transition K program, whose families require after-school care through SAC, would then be able to transition from, from the Transitional K to SAC. They are not able to do that this year. They were in the pilot year, because the program ran until 3:00. This year, it ends at 2:30. So, there is a gap. There is no coverage for those students from 2:30 to 3:00. We haven't typically had a lot of our kindergarten students or preschool, this is technically a preschool, in SAC, but it does impact some families. So, the feeling was to respect the needs of those families, to change the whole program from 9:00 to 3:00 and keep it within the six-hour day. They are also recommending continuing with the noontime dismissal on Friday, because there's a lot of different IEP meetings, program, parent meetings that happen during that time. However, in response to the school committee's question last month about, could we provide something else, so for parents that are looking for full-day kindergarten through the Transitional K, they wouldn't be stuck with that half-day Friday? So, what they're proposing is to add a Friday afternoon enrichment program, which we would staff according to the needs of students and how many students chose to participate, so that we would be able to offer a five-full-day program from 9:00 to 3:00 for the Transitional K. Many kids will choose to leave at noontime on Friday, but we will offer enrichment programming in the classroom for the ones that choose to stay.
Would the enrichment programming be an additional fee for the parents?
What we, well, we'll look at that when we talk about tuition.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yep.
All right. Any questions for the-
Could you describe what the enrichment program?
It could be literature-based activities. It could be music. It could be art activities. So, it would be a pro- developmentally appropriate kindergarten activities, but it would probably be staffed with assistant teachers and not necessarily the lead teacher.
Okay. Now, the, I know, Dr. Tepper said that in the original year, that's basically what you did anyways. Is that-
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon on Fridays, you had an assistant teacher doing like enrichment programs and things along those lines?
Someone would have to, well, I think what Dr. Tepper said was that the need for the meetings on Fridays was still there, so if Joan had to attend a meeting, there would be their sub-coverage or an assistant that would have to cover the classroom.
Right.
So, in effect, yes.
Right. But that wasn't, that wasn't like every, that wasn't, that's not an all-the-time thing?
No, that's not every Friday.
Okay.
There's an IEP meeting or a half-day in the classroom.
Right. Okay.
So, this would allow us to have a set time to schedule those meetings, and we would have the enrichment piece.
And if there wasn't, then?
Kids could go home at noon.
No, no, but if, no, but if there wasn't anything going on, then-
Teacher's still in class.
Teacher's still in class.
I think the intent is to create that opportunity on Fridays regularly for, because, again, I think Alicia started to talk about the, the preschool teachers are the only teachers in the district that are both a regular education teacher and the special education teacher. So, they have additional programming and planning responsibilities. So, where you see the other sessions, there's, there's some different times that teachers can complete those planning requirements. We have programs that end at 11:00, you know, so there's a little bit of time. In Joan's class, it's, it's all day. So, we have to create some opportunity for IEP development, parent meetings, progress meetings. They, they do their testing, they write their own reports, so we have to create that, that time. So, the intent is to do it in a consistent way.
I think one of the other things that's really important that, that really lacked the year that we, I didn't have this for this program, was there's a consultation time on IEPs where we're responsible to meet with all the service providers.
Right.
And that was really difficult. I mean, I was meeting on the fly anytime I could in order to fulfill that requirement, and that is something that's also during that Friday time. And I think in order to make that program successful, that, that's a really critical part of the program for special needs students.
Right. So, that would be consultation with physical therapists, speech therapists, occupational therapists.
I just, a quick question. On the pilot year, we did Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 3:00.
Yes.
And 2013, 2014, we dismissed Friday at noon. And then, this year, we're proposing to add back hours on Friday?
Yeah, as an option for parents.
Now, why, why did we decide to do that? Was there some level of parents that demanded some level of care at that period of time? Or, I'm just kind of curious?
It was from a question raised by the school committee.
About whether we could provide that.
Okay.
Currently, this year, there, there was no, that, you know, no parents coming to us saying, "What am I going to do Friday afternoon?"
Okay.
So, that was, that's being proposed as a result of, as an option as a result of your questions.
But, that being said, I think one of the things that we wanted to point out was that our enrollment dropped dramatically as well between the pilot year and this year of non-special ed children, right?
No, we actually, the program's full. The Transitional K program is full. We started the year with two openings that were filled in September.
I have 15, so I'm full.
Oh, okay.
But we did have two openings in September. I don't know if those were filled, because full-day kindergarten was full, but, you know, we, we did look at that, and it doesn't seem to have impacted, but, you know, we did have two openings, but we were able to fill them.
Oh, okay.
I do think this is a nice option, that if people really do need that, and that's part of the reason why they'd be looking for this program, that they do have that option.
Right.
Right. And if you look at the next page, I can walk through the tuitions, because this sort of overlaps. We're recommending keeping the tuitions constant and proportional. So, in the program that we're talking about, reducing one day, we have adjusted that tuition accordingly. In, for the Transitional K, this year, what we did was, we really estimated, well, we calculated what the price per hour of the program was and broke it up. So, the pilot year, the tuition would be-
Seven fifty.
Yes, seven fifty. So, when we looked at that proportionally, if you broke that out and you took the, the reduction-
Seven something.
Six forty-eight plus seventy-two. I'm sorry, I don't-
Oh, that's seven twenty.
Okay. So, it was seven twenty. So, what we are recommending, because we made an adjustment to the program hours last year, we did not adjust the tuition. We need to retroactively adjust the tuition to reflect that. So, the tuition for the Transitional K, as it exists this year, should have been $648 instead of the seven twenty, because they lost the three hours on Fridays. So, what Dr. Tepper's proposing for that is that we have families do a partial payment in April and no final payment in May to adjust the tuition.
How many, you said fifteen students?
Fifteen students. It's only tuition-based for students that are typically developing peers and that are not part of the program, which is about half. So, we would offer those families that credit. And then, what they're recommending for next year is that the Transitional K program be $648, which is the proportional amount, and that if parents chose to stay for the additional three hours, the after-school enrichment, that would be an additional $72, which would total the seven twenty. So, if you participate in the program as is, the tuition really would remain constant, but you have that other option. Any questions in terms of tuition? It's now early, rate of twenty-four dollars.
So, you see, I guess my, my question was, so currently, we're paying seven, seventy-two-hundred, is what they're paying?
Mm-hmm.
And it should have been-
Six thousand four hundred eighty.
Four eighty, right?
Yep.
Right, so.
Eighty.
Is, it's exactly seven twenty, so why would we do more than one month for free?
We would, we would, I, we wouldn't. We will credit them, whatever the difference is. So, if it's just the May payment, it would just be the May payment.
Okay, because you said partial April and then rest of May.
She was looking at the numbers, and I think she was thinking that they, that would cover the seven twenty, but if it's only-
Yeah.
Because it is, because they paid a deposit, right?
Right? Yeah. So, it'd be a slight reduction in April-
Yes.
And then, the full amount offset in May.
Yeah. We'll have to look. Basically, what we're-
The amount per month is seven twenty, and that's exactly what the difference is, because it's a seven hundred and twenty per month fee for ten months.
Okay.
Right?
I'll have to look at it again.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I just-
Yeah. So, then, they would just not make their final payment.
Final payment. And, and how, and what do we have, and that's, how many students are?
About seven.
No, no. How many are not? How many are?
About seven.
About seven, okay. So, we're talking five thousand dollars?
But remember, even among those, not all of them pay. We have a slight increase, so they, yes, but we did look at it.
Worst case scenario, five thousand.
Yes.
I just want to make, you know, when we're-
Ballpark is about five thousand dollars.
When we're dealing with our budget, it's, we don't have a lot of extra.
And that, that is from this year. We do, until we do the preschool registration, we won't know how many families choose to do the additional Friday afternoon.
Right.
Which would recoup some of that.
Right.
So, I, I am looking for a motion from the school committee to approve the tuition, propose tuitions for the 2014-15 school year, and once the tuitions are approved, then they can go ahead and put the registration process online. I don't know if there's any further questions also.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion? What is the, I, I have a question from a, the after-school enrichment. What is our magic number that we have to, I mean, I assume we need to, if only one parent signs up for it, it's not, not-
Then we probably won't run it.
No, I know.
It would have to be, it really depends, because you'd have to see how many parents are interested in that additional time, and then you could staff it differently. So, if you have three or four, you might just have one assistant, and you might be able, so we really can't guarantee it, and they will make that clear in the registration, that we need to have enough parents choose this option for us to be able to offer the programming.
In the-
Do you have a minimum number where we think we would have to have at least X number in order to run that program?
We haven't developed that guidelines yet. What we, the intent was to put in the registration form that we need sufficient enrollment in order for this to be an option, that we would let families know.
Now, currently, kids that are, you know, in the program, all kids, whether they're regular ed or special ed, all being dismissed at noon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, there's, there's not, there's not already an afternoon program that we're already having to-
Not currently.
That we're, we're already having to fund, so then your, your number is smaller from, you know, needing to-
Right now, everyone gets one at noon.
Okay. All right. So, we really would need to have a decent amount.
You'd have to have sufficient enrollment to make it worthwhile.
Okay. And so, we, I, I guess that would be my only caveat, is that when we're putting the-
Registration out.
Registering out, and put a few asterisks on.
Yeah. They'll make it clear that we need sufficient enrollment to, to do that. The, the, why it's difficult to say how many kids we need, we do have the staff on-site.
Right.
So, we're not adding staff. Our assistants work, they're working on material preparation, they're doing classroom support, so we have the existing staff.
Right.
So, it's a matter of, you know, really looking at it, allocating it, determining whether it's worthwhile.
Right.
But we will note on the registration that this is an option we're exploring, and we will need sufficient enrollment in order to offer this going forward.
Right, yeah, you don't, you don't, you know.
People would understand that.
I think so.
I mean, that's sort of standard.
Yep.
I think a lot of people would actually potentially take advantage of them.
Yep.
I'm not saying fifty kids, but I mean, three or four, or five, or six, whatever, would take advantage of it.
So, perfect. Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies. We're going to let them go home, because they have little ones coming early in the morning.
You can stay.
You're welcome to stay, but-
That's our entire audience.
We have a policy reading. We have a second reading of policy coming up.
We've got a lot on the agenda.
Friendship projects. Do you want to stay for that? No?
Oh, we're good at that.
Thank you.
They are. All right. A few other things. The, just, this is just informational. Required by the BIKO community to update you on activities at the collaborative as a member of the Board of Directors. So, this is just an update on different things. The program status, how many students they're serving, informs that they had a clear financial audit that was presented to the Board October 10th, and that it gives you some information that BIKO continues to be able to provide programming for our, a special population of students at a rate of about thirty percent less than private educational settings. So, we're still seeing a positive return on our investment with that group. This is just an update. All right. The next thing I want to talk about is the District Strategic Plan. So, I do have a PowerPoint. I want to give you some background context on how the strategic plan was developed. In your packet, you all have a draft of the strategic plan overview that we'll look at next, but I want to give you some background on the context. So, I have a PowerPoint. I have copies of that for you here, and copies if anyone in the audience would like them.
Donna, you want a copy?
enthusiasm.
We might as well go out and eat.
Yeah, if you just turn to the side, you should be over this table. All right. All right. So, the District Strategic Plan. I wanted to start by just giving a brief overview of the process, and during the course of the last school year, as part of my entry project, I conducted sort of what I would consider to be a state of the schools, a state of the state. And as part of that entry, I did extensive interviews with school committee members, parents, teachers, assistant teachers, our food service program, community members, parents, all of the town department heads. In addition to that, an extensive data and document review. So, looked at the MCAS data, the district budget history, evaluations of staff and administrators, looked at the school improvement plans, demographic data, contracts, as well as outside audit reports. And I presented all the findings to the school committee in February 12th in the entry report, which is also available on the school website. And the entry report really highlighted what we perceive at the time to be the district's strengths and some opportunities for growth and improvement. From there, our district administrative leadership team, which includes the curriculum directors, principals, they're actually curriculum directors, assistant principals, a special ed director, our technology director, our district data specialist, we looked at all the data from the entry report, and we also looked at some additional building-level data, and completed what is called a SWOT analysis. And the SWOT analysis takes a look at the district's strengths and weaknesses, opportunities for growth, and then also looks at what are some threats to progress? What are some things coming down the pike, like unfunded mandates from the Department of Ed, inconsistent revenue, things like that? And so, here is just, this is a snapshot of some of the items that were on our SWOT. And, so here is just, this is a snapshot of some of the items that were on our SWOT. So we took all the data, we looked at what are the strengths, and these are just examples of some of them. We do have published learning expectation documents in all our core subject areas. We are ahead of many districts in having adopted a rigorous new math program, we have very high MCAS scores. We also have grade level meeting time built into and included in the teacher's contract. And there's many, many more strengths that came in, into the analysis. Some examples of areas of weakness, we do not currently have a solid written curriculum for all our subject areas. The district had budget reductions consistently over the past six years. We didn't have a cohesive assessment plan with benchmarks in each of the core discipline areas. And we have a lot of technology, but the technology skills were really looked at in isolation and not yet fully integrated into all the core curriculum areas. Some opportunities, we have the opportunity to leverage technology right now to expand the ways we deliver professional development. We have a new teacher evaluation instrument. We have a potential opportunity to increase collaboration and resource sharing with the other districts, Rantham and Plainville, so those are examples. Some of the threats that we considered were unfunded mandates from the Department of Ed, the issue over identifying district determined measures and student impact ratings, because there's been a lot of controversy and lack of clarity around what those need to look like, transition to park, which, which we've also talked about tonight, and budget cuts in revenue. I do have copies of the full SWOT analysis if anybody is interested, but these are just some examples. From there, what the leadership team did was to propose three key goals that we felt really leveraged our areas of strength, but were most critical to improving the teaching and learning in the district. The goals were presented to the school committee in June and voted on. And then, when we did our opening meeting this year in August, the results of the entry report, SWOT analysis, and all the district goals were shared with all staff members throughout the district. Teachers wrote their school improvement, teachers wrote their professional development plans around our district goals, as did all the administrators. We then recruited members to serve on the more comprehensive district strategic planning committee. The strategic planning committee, the intent was to have really broad representation, so we have the administrator, several of the administrators on that, we have our district data specialist, Roxanne is there from the Human Resource Land, we have Sue McDermott, who's our building sub at the Freeman Kennedy, we have guidance counselors from both buildings, we have a specialist teacher, Bonnie O'Connell, who's a music teacher at the HOD, and technology, and then Amy Fifer, who's a classroom teacher. What the group did was, the strategic planning group has met pretty much monthly since, throughout the course of the fall, and the focus of our group has been to take our district, our three district goals, and to look at the SWOT analysis and really the state of the state of where are we now, and then where does our goal want us to be in the next three to five years. And then we looked at what the gaps were, and brainstormed and planned, what are the action steps we need to take as a district to close that gap and to bridge from where we are now to where we want to be. So we, again, we identified the starting point, we identified the gaps, we brainstormed the action steps that we needed to take. Then this is the next part that we really spent a significant amount of time on, and I think it's the critical piece to making a strategic plan work. We looked at each of the action steps, and then we considered, what are the resource demands on the system, whether it's financial or in terms of professional development, and how much effort is required for each action step to be completed successfully? And then we paced and developed a scope and sequence that was reasonable and sustainable, so we don't have, in phase one, all the heavy hitter initiatives, because we know that that will impede our ability to implement effectively. So, this is just a visual of how we did that. So we took each action step, and we placed it on the chart, whether it was in terms of, whether it was going to be a high effort for the district, high in terms of resources required, or low, and then what the impact of that action step would be on student achievement. Was it going to have a high impact on student achievement, or a low? We then paced the action steps according to that, so that we tried to put in the things that were going to have the greatest return for students and the highest impact of achievement earliest in the strategic action plan, but we also made sure that we didn't have too many high effort, high resource demand action steps in any one given year. From that, we developed the strategic action plan that is in your packet, has our mission, our theory of action, the three stated goals, and then under the strategic initiatives, it's broken down into phases instead of years, knowing that we might move fluidly, we might finish all the action steps in one column in one year and then move on, others might take longer, so it's done in phases. So you'll see the strategic initiatives in your packet. The next steps that we're taking is, I'd like the committee to look at the proposed strategic plan overview tonight. If that is approved, then the committee's going to continue their work and develop a much more detailed plan for how we'll complete each action step in phase one. That plan will include timelines, our benchmarks and outcomes, the resources needed, who will be involved, and then we will present that complete document to the school committee in April. The goal is, once we have the approved strategic plan, we'll share that back with all staff, although the members of the strategic planning committee are keeping people updated throughout the process, and then to be able to post it to the district website to share with all parents and community members by May. Okay? So that's just the overview and the background, and then if you want to come back, we can take a look at the actual plan. How to shut this off. There we go. Okay. So I just wanted to walk you through the initiatives that we have, and then I can, if you have questions, ask them along the way, or we can look at it at the end. We have three primary goals as part of our strategic plan. The first is to ensure high achievement and outcomes for all students by engaging students in a rigorous coherent curriculum that fosters the development of 21st century skills. So, in a nutshell, that's really our curriculum goal. We have a second goal, that's to develop and promote educator excellence characterized by high-quality instruction, implementation of best practices, and professional collaboration. So that's really the adult development we need to do in order to support the curriculum goal, as well as the assessment goal. And then the last goal is to create a coherent cohesive pre-K6 assessment plan with clear proficiency benchmarks in each content area that gives teachers the data they need to design and improve instruction. So by that, we mean, we need to have a clear assessment plan for what we measure in first grade in literacy, what are our grade level expectations, so that we can tell which students are exceeding those, which students are falling behind, and we can plan instruction appropriately. Same for math, same for science, same for social studies. Okay? Under each of the goals, we've identified the initiatives that we think are going to have the most critical power. Under the curriculum goal in phase one, the first strategy is that we really want to take some time to define the skills, learning expectations, and qualities we want to see a successful graduate leave with. This came up because we were talking about, what is it that parents want their sixth graders to, you know, leave with and enter KP? What does, and that, that's more than just the curriculum piece, it's the habits of mind, it's the study skills, it's the work ethic, so we really want to get parent input too, and put that out to the community, and we want to define what is the ideal graduate leave with, and then we can backwards design and make sure that our curriculum is preparing them for that. So that's the first thing. The second thing, we are suggesting we do a comprehensive review of the science curriculum in phase one. You already approved the curriculum review process cycle, and science is what's currently up, and the intent of that is to really look at how effective is our program in meeting the standards, how well are our students performing, where do we have gaps in resources, so that will, that is actually currently underway. The next three pieces are addressing that weakness that we don't have a comprehensive written curriculum, as well as the fact that the technology skills aren't well-integrated at this point. So we're recommending we develop a tiered written curriculum for social studies, and what, when I say tiered, it's going to identify the state standards, what are the resources, instructional resources for teaching, what is our assessment plan for how we're measuring progress, and then, when it says tiers, it's what are we using to enrich for kids that are performing above grade level, and what are we using as tools for remediating kids that are struggling? So the curriculum should include enrichment as well as remedial opportunities. And we are also looking for any written curriculum now to clearly articulate what technology skills are covered in that area. So if you're writing the math curriculum, or talking about graphing, what are our expectations for kids to be able to do graphing, using graphing calculators and online programs, so that we're embedding those technology skills right into the curriculum? The way this was structured, we're recommending that you do the writing of the curriculum the year after the review, because during the review process, you're identifying where the gaps and resources are, we're recommending new purchases, we're recommending sometimes new programs, so you really need to do the review first, and then the following year, write the curriculum. So, in phase one, we're recommending writing the curriculum for social studies. We also had done the math review two years ago, so we're in a position at this point to write the curriculum for math as well. We have also been looking at our writing program, and we've talked about that in terms of the MCAS, and that is an area of weakness, so there was a separate review just looking at the writing program, and we're in a position now where we can write the curriculum for the written language. That's not all of ELA, that's just the writing component. So those are the strategies that we're recommending, putting in place in phase one for the curriculum goal. You'll notice that if you move across into the professional development, we, there's a couple of recommendations. The first is, we think we need to have, instead of a, instead of planning the professional development day by day, we think the district really needs to have a comprehensive long-range PD plan that offers, you know, that doesn't just consider the early release days and professional development days, but also thinks about, what courses do we want to offer? Can we offer graduate, we're offering a graduate-level data course on site right now. What technology workshops do we want to offer? And it's much more of a comprehensive program.
May I back up a second?
You can.
On your first strategic element with the curriculum development.
Yep.
You mentioned something that you would rather assess first and then develop the curriculum, or did I read that backwards?
Yes, that's, that's correct. The, the.
Assess the current?
Yes, assess the current, what we did was, we, there wasn't a formal curriculum review cycle in place prior to the last couple of years, so we put that in place. The intent of the curriculum review is to take a look at all of the current resources, identify what's dated, what's current, where the gaps are. We look at achievement data, like in the MCAS, so part of the science review is looking at our achievement data. There are units in science our kids aren't doing well in, so I think Roxon Minerals was one. Is it a matter of where it's sequenced in the curriculum? Is it at the wrong grade level? Is it the unit that's weak? So, the review looks at the current curriculum, identifies the gaps, and then they come and present to you and make recommendations for changes. So I would anticipate that we will be replacing some of our current science units next year with new material, we might be adopting new textbooks, so you don't want to write the curriculum until you've done that. Once we know what our, what our recommended programs will be, what our resource will be, then we have all the tools to go ahead and write the actual curriculum.
Okay, so, so then, we've done the assessment for the social studies?
Yep, and they presented in, in May last year, and you adopted a new textbook for grade six and several new resources.
And we've already.
You already did the review for math and adopted GoMath.
We're already moving forward with the science.
Yep.
Correct? And one of our strengths you had on our SWOT analysis was, is that we had a new.
You have learning expectation.
Published learning.
Expectations documents.
You re-adopted rigorous new math program.
Yep.
So is that, does that include curriculum?
Yes, and the math program you adopted is the GoMath, and that's the core resource we use to teach the curriculum, but it is not the curriculum in and of itself. So, for example, the GoMath program doesn't address all the needs that we have in terms of building math fluency, so there's additional resources used to address that standard. So, the GoMath is a core resource, but it's not the curriculum in and of itself. So they have to write that out. Where is it supplemented? Where are there other tools that we're using? What are the online tools that we're using? How are we assessing progress? And GoMath is a big piece of that, but it is not a standalone curriculum.
So, so the review takes place in so much that, all right, the program that we have, say it's math, is not working, so we're going to replace it, we found that another overall program is GoMath. And then we purchase, basically purchase that and then build around that. That's our, that's our hub, and then build the curriculum around it, how it's implemented, days it's implemented, things along those lines.
And where, no, no one program meets every needs, I mean, all of these programs are written for multiple states to, you know, to market, so we have to look at a program as a core resource, but we also have to customize it to what the needs of the district are. And so, any program that you purchase, it can be a core resource, but it won't stand alone, there's places you have to supplement, and you want to do that with consistency. So if the fraction unit needs to be enriched, or we want to add additional problem solving, we want to do that universally across the grade level, which is where the written curriculum comes in.
And so these assessments for these subject areas, are they available somewhere?
Well, the social studies presented their report to the school committee in May, and that, I think that, I don't know if it's on our web, but we still have that if anybody wants to see it. The math curriculum is done prior to my arrival, so I'm not sure, the math review and the adoption of the new program.
That was done in May of 12.
Yeah, it was, it was done the year prior.
Right before you got here.
Yeah. I started in July, so the new program, I don't know, I can't speak to that process. And the written curriculum, if you want to see the information from that, we do have information from that. Okay? So under the professional development, we want to develop the long-range professional development plan. The second is to really develop and strengthen the new teacher induction program. We hire, as a district, so few new teachers each year. We do have a mentoring program, but we don't really have a robust course for new teachers that provides some classroom management strategies, additional information on, you know, the core content areas, and we've been working with Rantham and Plainville to see if we could put something together and share those resources to make something a little bit richer, because we know a lot of new teachers leave the field after five to seven years, and we want to improve our ability to retain good talent, and strong mentoring programs and strong induction programs have a real positive impact on keeping people in the profession.
And I would assume that also helps keep good teachers here.
Here, absolutely, and not leaving to another district.
Leaving for a few extra dollars, there's more of a personal bond.
Community and support, yes, absolutely. The next thing we have in place, or the next strategy, is to provide training and support for the implementation of district-wide data teams. And this is something that we've been working on and talking a lot about. It ties to the assessment goal. We're going to be collecting much more concrete data about how students are performing in relation to the standards. We want teachers trained as a group to be able to utilize that data, to monitor progress, to shift instructional groupings, to evaluate the performance of our curriculum resources. So we are looking to provide some data training for all of our staff. Currently, all the administrators have taken a data coaching course, and we are currently training a teacher at every grade level in data coaching, and that's, again, a week-long graduate course. We've spread the days over the course of the year. We also, because we are moving into the direction of doing a lot more curriculum writing, feel that in phase one, we have to provide professional development on effective curriculum design and assessment planning. And then the last is to reflect that we need to create continued ongoing opportunities for teachers to plan together, to evaluate curriculum, to look at student work together, so that's the professional dialogue and collaboration. Again, what you see listed in this are the big-ticket objectives. You will, once we move forward with approving those, we will be outlining under each objective what are all the action steps that need to be taken to fulfill that, what's the timeline, what are the resources, who's involved, and what will be the outcomes? So that's sort of the next step.
Would you consider curriculum development a strength or an area of improvement for our current school system?
It's an area of improvement. We don't have any written curriculum, and we have not.
No, I mean, the people writing the curriculum.
What we've done right now is to provide some training for the teachers that sit on our curriculum teams, so that they would have the tools to go forward with the writing of the curriculum, but we haven't provided universal training. I would say that the people that are participating in the curriculum, on the curriculum committees have had pretty significant training and are very skilled in the work that they're doing, but we want to make that much broader, and really support all teachers in being able to contribute to that process. Under the assessment goal, we want to develop an ELA assessment plan in year one with benchmarks for decoding phonemic awareness, fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary, those are the five core elements of successful literacy. So we want to focus on ELA, and then we do the same for math, an assessment plan with benchmarks for the math concepts, as well as fact fluency. We are required, as recipients of the kindergarten grant, to implement a new assessment tool, a readiness assessment called Teaching Strategies Gold in the kindergarten. We are required by the State Department of Ed to identify district determined measures to pilot for ELA math and non-core subjects. So recognizing the amount of effort for those two things, we've paced things accordingly. And then the other thing we really want to do is, as we're collecting all this student data, we want to look at technology tools for managing that, so that we would have, in effect, an electronic portfolio for a student, that a teacher would be able to pull up their class, look at a child's performance on math benchmarks over the course of the year, and it would all be at your fingertips in a data management tool. There's a lot different districts are using, and so we want to explore and determine what's best for us.
A tool like that, with the, where the teachers could pull up this individual students, information and stuff, would there be any way where we could maybe have it linked, so parents could do the same thing if they wanted to see how their kids have been progressing?
There are some tools online that, that have components you can unlock for parents that would allow them to see some grades. That's all, that would all be part of the discussion in, in looking at the products and what, what we need them for. There's some data that you may not want to put out all the time, but that would be a consideration in, in looking at programs.
My whole thing is, you know, we know that kids never lie to parents about grades, you know?
There's a lot of districts that have different tools and, you know, unlock parts of it so parents could look at their, you know, end-of-term grades or monitor progress, you know, that would be something that we'd be looking at.
Is the goal assessment tool, is this the pre-K assessment, or prior to entering kindergarten assessment that the DESE is currently piloting?
No, we have a kindergarten screening tool that we use as the pre, and I'm not sure which one, there's like three different ones out there, I'm not sure what we use, but that is not what this is. This is a tool that we're required to administer, or administrate, and this is actually, there's a lot of observational data that's collected as part of Teaching Strategy Goal, to look at children's readiness skills and their performance and their growth over the course of their kindergarten year. So it's not a screening tool, it's a tool to monitor those early literacy, early math skills over the course of their kindergarten year, and it is being piloted across the state. The state gave recipients of kindergarten grants three choices of assessment tools to use, and they had to, we had to identify and adopt one, Teaching Strategies. Teaching Strategies Gold was the preferred.
Right, because I know they also are doing a pre-screening to determine readiness as well.
That's not what this is, but.
And so, that's not part?
That is not what this is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so those are the Phase One strategic initiatives. Phase Two, and I'll try to go a little quicker through these. In Phase Two, under curriculum, it's our year to conduct a comprehensive review of the ELA curriculum. So, this year, science, last year was social studies, next year will be ELA. Because we will have just completed the science review, it would be the year to write the curriculum for science, so develop the tiered and write the curriculum for science. We would also like to develop a written curriculum for the special subject areas, which is art, musical, music, and physical education in Phase Two. Another strategic initiative there is to review and align our special intervention programs in math with the core curriculum. So, we use a variety of different resources for students that we have that are on IEPs that are struggling with their math performance. We need to relook at those tools to see how well they align with the new GoMath program, and if there are resources out there that would be a better fit in terms of consistency of language, the visual models you're using, so that would be in Phase Two. The other thing that the committee is recommending is that we investigate at that point the cost and value of programs that would be designed to enrich the core curriculum. So, what would the cost and value of reinstituting a foreign language program in the elementary schools be? What's the best model, how would it, you know, what would the cost impact? And also, a program around disability awareness. So, during Phase Two, we'd like to research, you know, the effectiveness and the cost of those. Under the professional development, we recognize that after a review, like the science review or any curriculum review, we have to provide professional development for teachers on the new methods and the new resources we're recommending. So, there would be content-based professional development for staff to support the recommendations of the science committee. We also feel that we need to revisit and provide training for staff on differentiated instruction. So, as we're talking about writing all these tiered curriculums, so you have opportunities for enrichment, you have opportunities for remediation, how do you manage the class when you're leading multiple-level groups? So, we want to revisit that with that in mind. We also are seeing an increasing number of students come through the schools with social-emotional difficulties, and we recognize that we need to provide some additional training for staff in that, and we're recommending we do that in Phase Two. And then, by that point, we will have identified our required legal district-determined measures, and the Department of Ed is now reframing how they want staff to write their goals. So, we may have to do some mandated training in Phase Two on those two items. And under the assessment, we would like to go live with our district-wide data teams that will be using our district benchmark data to inform and improve curriculum instruction. We want to then, we talked about developing common assessment benchmarks and guidelines for math and ELA in Phase One. In Phase Two, we would like to have common assessments and scoring tools for the social studies curriculum so that every teacher is using some common essays, some common measures for each unit. We would like to develop a process involving parents if students are receiving interventions for academic needs. How do we keep parents better informed and provide them with tools to support at home? And we also want to identify some common writing assessments and shared scoring rubrics so that we can raise the bar and really have consistency about what constitutes a well-thought-out written piece. Final phase, Phase Three, would be our review under the curriculum area, review of the art, music, and wellness programs. We would be writing our curriculum for ELA, following the ELA review. And we would like to just note that we want to maintain ongoing curriculum review teams in all core content areas that look at the data annually and make small adjustments as needed. We know, under the professional development, that we will be, will need to provide training for staff on the recommendations of the ELA committee. I don't know why it put the date in there. That was the footer, I don't know why.
On April there.
On, yeah, on February 6th, that's my footer that came off the middle of the page, I apologize. We do think at that point, we need to revisit it and update our training on emergency protocols and evacuations, things like that. And we want to look at technology tools to help the district better manage and track teachers' professional development and recertification. Under the assessment goal in there, then we would like to develop common assessments and scoring tools for the science curriculum. And the last one, which I've heard lots of people talk about, is revising the district report cards. We put that consciously in Phase Three for a couple of reasons. We feel we need to have the proficiency benchmarks and expectations in the curriculum written before we revise the report cards, or we're going to be doing it twice. Additionally, when I talked about that tool we use to weight effort and impact, revising the report cards without those documents is a very high effort and is probably not going to make a significant difference in achievement for students. So, we tried to put the things that we knew would matter most to kids first. And again, we really need to have clear benchmarks and written curriculum before we go about revising.
What are your, what are your timeframes for, in a perfect world? And I know that, you know, I mean, just ballparking.
I mean, in a ballpark way, most of these things will be, Phase One will roughly be a year of work.
Okay.
But we did it purposely as phases because, for example, the district-determined measures, now the state just put out model contract language in January. We had a meeting with the superintendents association, you know, a few, a couple of weeks ago. We're supposed to implement those in September. They put the contract language out in January, and no association supported it. NTA, MTA, mask, nobody supported it. So, that timeline could change, so that initiative could go into Phase Two. You know, or we could be working on that while we're already moving on with some of the other Phase Two items. But roughly, each phase would be about a year.
A year from, as we sit here tonight?
Some of Phase One has already started, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
And did I give you the template? I don't know if I gave you a copy of the template, but what we would do next, if the committee approves the overall objectives, is that we will take each objective. So, where it says define the skills, you'll get an individual page that will say what the objective is, what are all the actions that need to be taken, the timeline for that particular objective, what the outcomes will be and how you can measure. And that will be the tool that I will use to report back to the school committee on progress. So, you'll have the objectives, what the outcomes are, and I can tell you where we are when I update you on each objective. Any questions? I have to credit the committee and the administrative team. It's been a tremendous amount of work, and I think very reflective process, and people have really been thoughtful about managing the pace of change with a clear end in mind, so.
This seems, or maybe it is, I mean, like you just mentioned, the committee has done a tremendous amount of work. I mean, this is a lot of, I'm amazed at the amount of items. Is this, I hesitate to ask, is it almost too much? I mean, is it, can you manage this?
We, I really think we can. The grid that we use to look at the resource demand.
What's the timeframe?
You know why? When we use that grid to really look at the resource demands of the district and what, how high effort it'd be, some of the, some of this work is being done by a small group of people. So, it's not tapping everybody, and we looked at that. So, when we're looking at developing the tiered written curriculum, the social studies committee is doing that work. So, we have that standing group that's all year. It's just that they now have a focus of what their committee is going to do each year. So, this year, they're writing, next year, they're writing assessments. So, it's really managed that work. The impact for all staff is the training that we need to do to support it. So, we really paced that so that we weren't tapping everybody or too many people with too many big projects in one year.
Okay, because that was my concern, is, I mean, it's fantastic, I think all the points seem great. I just want to make sure we didn't get into a situation where this becomes almost too big, that we can't get through it, and then we're.
Yep, I think it's very, I really think it's very manageable, and I think the people on the committee felt it was manageable, but we really looked at that, because from past experience, I can tell you, I've been in districts where the strategic plans is long and nothing gets done. We really tried to streamline the initiatives, we tried to really be thoughtful about what was most critical, and we really tried to make sure that we weren't putting too much out in one year, because then the implementation's not good and the follow-through's not good. So, I think that it's a very realistic plan, and things tie together. So, we're doing a review, we're writing the curriculum, we're doing the training. So, it's sort of goes across the, right.
And I do like the fact you have it spread out, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, as opposed to absolutely it's going to be done by X, because there can be any number of things that change it slightly, but that doesn't change the overall picture. So, okay, that's fine. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
So, what do you plan, like, when you do the reviews of the curriculum after they're written, you go through an assessment phase, correct?
We do the assessment of the curriculum, then we write it.
Right.
Yep, and then that committee, in Phase Two, is, we maintain the ongoing committees. So, at the end of that, year after writing, they will continue to look at and revise until we do a major review again of that content area. So, each content area, by the review cycle, is reviewed every five years.
What if they, after you go through it a year, they find some gaps?
That committee will make some adjustments. So, they will do small-scale adjustments after the review and adjust as needed. There might be a particular element that they look at, but they won't do a full curriculum review again for a couple of years.
Because we had every five or every six?
Every, I believe, I have to pull up, but I think it's every five.
Okay.
Yep, we have math, social studies, science, ELA, special subjects. So, that would be art, music, wellness, and then it starts again.
And it starts over again, okay. All right, anyone else? I'd like to credit Dr. Alardi for pushing this. It's nice, this is something that, you know, that has been needed for a very, very long time, and it's amazing how many schools don't have it, and it's amazing that we didn't have a long-term mission statement and an action plan, and it makes things, you have to know where you're going in order to go there.
To ever get there.
And I think that's what happens a lot of times, it's, you know, schools and, you know, so everyone's so busy putting out fires and just dealing with day-to-day issues that they don't look forward, and then the next thing you know, they're behind the eight ball. And, you know, so I just wanted to credit you for that.
Yes.
I've had a great, like I said, committee that's put a lot of time in and have been excited about the process. So, I think, I feel good about the work, I feel like we have an organized plan for how to go forward, so I think it's positive. So, I guess what I'd like is if the school committee would consider voting to accept the strategic plan so we can move forward in our work in terms of developing the action steps and the benchmarks and outcomes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
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 Seconded and thirded.
I do seconds.
All right, the next two items I have are fairly quick. Lisa Aldemhicky came early this year to request permission from the school committee to pilot that Friendship Project, which was a partnership with Boston College. We talked about that earlier in this year. What she is recommending at this point, because we didn't get the approval until December, she's recommending that we wait until the fall to launch that, partly because it's such a short turnaround time that if we begin the process, we won't get the data back, and it won't help this year's current teachers. In addition, the committee had asked her to schedule a meeting for Dr., I think it's McEvie, to share information with parents, and she thought if we went forward with the project next year, she could have her here at the open houses to answer any questions and to do a brief presentation. So, it's not a change in project, she's just recommending we don't start until September.
Because we already voted this.
You voted to approve it.
With an opt-in, or was it?
Yep, yep, and with the condition that Dr. McEvie present the information. So, she's only recommending changing the timeline.
Okay, and so, and she's going to present at the open house, which makes the most sense anyways.
Yeah, because then you have everybody there.
Okay.
Yeah, so is that?
That works. Any, I don't think we need to vote that, no?
No, I don't think you do. Okay, and then the last thing, I just wanted to let you know, the current full-day kindergarten enrollment has gone, we moved the timeline up, like we discussed, for budget purposes. We currently have eighty-four students registered for the full day and six for the half-day. Based on the census data and the birth rates, we're expecting about ninety students to register. So, we're pretty close to what our expectations are. Appropriate staffing for that kind of enrollment. The only concern we have is the small number of students right now registered in the half-day program. We're going to have to continue to monitor that, because can't really run a class of six. So, we would have to think creatively about how to give that half-day option if we don't see greater enrollment. Traditionally, new students moving to the district and later enrollments tend to go into the half-day program. That's just been the pattern of our enrollment data. So, we have had low numbers before and then ended up with fourteen or fifteen. But we're going to have to watch that closely, and by May, we're going to have to make some programming decisions.
What number of students do we need at minimum to make the half-day viable?
You really want to have a class of at least fourteen kids. You know, there are lots of different ways, and I don't want to jump ahead, because we may see that enrollment, it could be a non-issue. There's lots of different ways districts have coordinated that when they've had low enrollment. So, in some cases, you may have kids and leave at noon and be part, you might put, have five full-day classes and some students leave partway through the day. All of our curriculum is designed so that the afternoon is enrichment. The core content is presented in the morning, because our half-day program has to be equivalent to the curriculum offered in a full day. You know, we're required to do that, so there's ways around it. I'm not sure we're going to have to go there, we'd love to be able to have a separate half-day classroom. But just so you know, that's what our enrollment looks like at this point.
And these numbers with our budgeting, is okay from the standpoint of we can move the additional kindergarten teacher into first grade?
Yes, yes, for next year, we have our planning on seven first grades, yes, so we don't have a policy issue around class size next year.
Right.
Yeah.
And that includes, you know, with ninety, we don't, we can bring someone up there, and we don't have.
It's actually, no, no, it's, no, we don't have an extra kindergarten teacher, I'm sorry, let me clarify. We have an extra second-grade teacher that will move down to first grade next year to adjust for the large kindergarten coming in, because we have a smaller second grade. We didn't add a teacher to kindergarten this year, we added two assistants, so their class sizes are high. We need five teachers to manage the eighty-four kids.
I thought we added one in the spring, actually, on the budget, and then in the fall, we added two assistants.
We have five kindergartens and a half-day, and we'd need that same staffing for next year for eighty-four and six. Where the play might come in is if we don't have enough kids to run a half-day kindergarten, we might have that half position. But, you know, hopefully, like I said, it's early.
It's only February.
It's only February, I expect we'll have a half-day class.
Okay.
But no, we don't have an extra kindergarten teacher, but we do have an extra second-grade teacher that would be going. And it's, I should say, second-grade position, I don't know what the teacher would be, but we have an extra position to move to first grade so that that large class sizes in kindergarten will be consistent with our policy guidelines when they move forward to first grade.
Okay. Because what's our total kindergarten right now, one forty?
One thirty-three.
One thirty-three. And how many of those are in half-day?
I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
It's fourteen or fifteen, I think.
So, one twenty, one nineteen, one twenty.
All right, that's all I have on my report, which was lengthy. I know you're all getting blurry-eyed, and we have a budget meeting next, so that's what I've got.
Trying to beat us into submission on the budget. Okay, committee reports, Nest, do you want to take Nest? I wasn't at the meeting today.
Sure, we had a meeting today, actually, with the Nest Board and the TPA Board. And what we're looking at is trying to find a way to bring those two groups together to better be able to better support each other and to work collaboratively, share resources. Because right now, they both fund teacher grants, but they want to kind of clarify and define which kinds of grants each group would fund. And they also want to sort of pace their fundraisers, so they're not sending out things at the same time. And the idea is maybe if we can come up with sort of one group and they'd work together underneath that, that it would provide better service for school, they could share volunteer support. You know, both groups are struggling with fundraising, both groups are struggling with getting parents involved. So, they're looking at ways to work together with being able to keep the mission unique of each group, so.
I was at a ribbon cutting yesterday in Rentham for the new science lab. Rentham has West, which is where we stole the name from.
Yeah.
And they've been around two years longer than we have, and I think we've given out roughly $4,000 in grants, and they've given out, as of this year, $122,000 in grants, and they founded a whole new science lab that yesterday, and, you know, they have, you know, they do a great job getting corporate support. You know, Rentham Cooperative Bank was a major sponsor of that yesterday, and they made a substantial financial donation. So, you know, the money's out there, the ability's out there, Rentham's the same-sized town as Norfolk. You know, that's a huge opportunity, you know, that we're, that we're missing by, you know, parents not getting involved and people not, you know, taking, you know, a hold of it. I mean, I know that both the TPA and the, and the, you know, Nest have had a hard time getting volunteers and getting people. And, you know, everyone wants, you know, all these extracurricular and all these enrichment things, you know, Spanish and foreign language and more science programs and things like that. And this is a perfect example.
and more science programs and things like that, and this is a perfect example where, you know, working together in the community and getting outside grants from, you know, associations and major corporations really can, really can pay off. Plus, they have like a comedy night that they raise twenty-five thousand dollars with every year and, you know, Dancing with the Stars and...
And we did talk about the TPA and the Nest Group working together maybe to sponsor some joint fundraisers, and the proceeds going to both groups and then things like that, like an evening out or more event-based versus materials. So, they're really looking at ways to work together so that both will have better resources and things to offer the community.
Okay. KP, Jeff's not here, you have any, you want to talk about their budget?
We're, we're working on the budget with KP. We have a meeting, actually, I could say that we do have a meeting scheduled with the superintendent and all of the superintendents from Rantham Plainville and Norfolk and our special ed directors to look at their projections going forward and what their budget needs are, because we did have some questions about the numbers going forward and, and what they were requesting. So, we have a meeting to discuss that February twenty-seventh.
Right, okay. Policy Subcommittee, we have a couple of second readings. Mark?
Yeah, we have a second reading on the consideration and criteria for approved school partners with attachment to policy, KBE.
The changes in blue on page two, you had asked us to add that.
Right, right. Okay. Is that, is that the only change?
That was the only one that was recommended at the last meeting.
And that's the only reading we have for policy.
Oh, okay. Now, is that the only change from?
Yes, the only change from the last meeting was that additional statement.
Right, but this is, but this is changed substantially from original KBE.
This is, this is to be attached to policy, KBE, it's just guidelines.
Okay, perfect.
It's just guidelines for approving.
This didn't exist prior to.
It's not replacing, it's being attached.
Right, I was going to say, because otherwise, I would think that was just the, that's Larry Tench. Let's see.
Also, in policy, we're currently reviewing the school dress code criteria as well as a few other things such as the gym rentals. Got nothing to present to you on that per se today. Hopefully, we should have something by the next meeting or so.
Okay, great. Kelly?
Budgets. We are very close to finalizing a preliminary budget. Hope to have that completed within the month, I would imagine. We are, have a prioritized list of possible reductions to the budget as a contingency plan, and we also have a prioritized list of add-backs to staffing that hopefully will all be finalized by the end of the month. And we have a thrilling meeting after this meeting.
Yes.
Popcorn will be provided.
All, all of you out here in the audience are welcome to join us.
There you go.
Technology Subcommittee, I know they met, but Jeff's not here. And I don't think Jeff was able to attend the, was he able to attend the technology?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And Building Subcommittee, nothing new, right?
We did not meet since, we have not met since the last meeting, and I don't know if we, we don't have a date for the final meeting.
We don't have a date yet, no.
Because they're trying to get the rest of everything wrapped up, so ideally, that's going to be the final meeting.
Yeah, and we've just gotten, it's a little bit frustrating, we've just got communications from the MSBA to, again, claiming that they have only got change orders one to twelve on file. Now, we, I know, because I've been CC'd on, Greg has submitted all the way up to twenty-two, but they have a new project manager again, and they, they're asking Jocelyn Lester to resubmit all the change orders from twelve to current. They've been submitted multiple times, and I know Greg's done it, but it's really holding off the closeout.
This has been nine months?
Yeah, but they have a new project manager, and they're saying that they don't have that document, so I don't know if that's going to, the only reason I'm sharing that is I don't know if that's going to delay the scheduling of the next building meeting because he now has to resubmit everything before they can move forward with the closeout.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing we can do anyways.
Right.
Until you know what the... Until we know what that is.
Right, so that's why I think Greg might be holding off on scheduling because now we have to redo all of that.
Okay, we have a renewal application for school partner for the Wellness Committee. Okay, any questions on that?
No.
They might, basically, on the second page, go through all the examples that they've done anyway, so, even without our... Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Or motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next meeting is Tuesday, March eleventh. Does that still work for everyone? I think that we have that in, that's our standard meeting date anyways. Adjourned, thank you very much.